I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of August 18th, 2016. It's 6:00 PM to order. And Clerk Simmski, roll call please.
Mayor Grumther?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Addington is absent. Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Village Manager May?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. Open forum. If there's anybody here who'd like to speak anything other than what's on the agenda, no, so I'll close open forum and move on to reports. The first one's the mayor's report. And it gives me great pleasure to always recognize one of our staff with our customer service award. This is where someone goes over and above the day-to-day routine of their job to provide service to our residents. And I'd ask Spencer, if you can go to the podium, and we'll announce our customer service award winner and say a little bit about it.
So it, Mayor, Village Board, gives me great pleasure to introduce Cindy Westra, if you want to come on up, Cindy, as our customer service award recipient at this meeting. Cindy does a great job with customer service. We always get a lot of wonderful positive comments from all the people that work with her. There was a couple of specific incidences recently that really called attention to the great caliber of employee that she is, which she is all the time, but we just saw some great examples of that recently. One of the issues was, as you're aware, we're a little bit understaffed in our department. So there was a day where she was scheduled to be off, and she volunteered to come in and help maintain some additional coverage in the morning with the understanding that she had a specific time when she had to be gone. And we said, "That's wonderful. Thank you for coming in." About a minute before it got to that time when she was supposed to go home, there was, some of her processes had gotten to the point where now she could do some more work for it. So instead of going home, when she was originally planning to go home, she was willing to stay even longer to cover that. And then during that time, while that, while she was doing that, we got a request from another department for some information, which would require her to pull a report. And so even though it was her day off, past the time she was going home on her day off, after she got done with the first part of the process, she went and pulled the report and sent the information on to the department. By the time I even saw the email, she had already responded to it, even though it was after the time she was supposed to go home on a day she wasn't even supposed to be here. So it was just a great example of the kind of dedication that she has had ever since she's been here. And so I just wanted to thank her for that and recognize her for that. Thank you.
(applause). We're moving on. I recently had an opportunity to go to Taiwan as a guest of their government, just returned two days ago. And it was an unbelievable trip. I was, it was a group of Midwest elected officials. I was there with four senators from four different states and five representatives and me, the mayor. And it was a very good trip. And one of the reasons I was able to attend is because of TECO, their cultural and economic center that's here in Westmont. And because I was a guest in there, we decided to send Larry McIntyre and Larry Forsberg to continue to look at a sister city program. In a month and hour or so, we're going to make a formal report. But tonight, I just wanted to let you know that when you say roll out the red carpet, they rolled out the red carpet. They treated us extremely well. We got to visit and see a lot of different things. And I'd ask Larry and Larry if they can come up to the podium to give a little bit more of a recap.
Thank you, Mayor, and Village Board members. We kind of followed the trail that the mayor had blazed in the trip to Taiwan, and we followed shortly after he had left. And while he was on his tour with the government dignitaries, visiting governmental bodies throughout the Taiwan area, we kind of were on our own mission, visiting with the Convention Tourism Bureau there, visiting with the Ministry of Small and Medium Businesses, visiting with the governmental body that oversees the TECO Center here in Westmont, and getting a chance to develop relationships with them. And then ultimately, we met up with the mayor and went and visited with multiple counties to talk about a sister city program. And I'm glad to say that the opportunities we had were very productive. And when we do the presentation next month, because we have a lot of materials to pull together, you'll see the whole scope of everything that we had to cover. We have a couple photos here that we're going to pop up, take a look at. This is, sorry, getting a little reflection there. This is the cultural center in Sinju County. When we arrived there, they picked us up at the, at the train and took us over to their cultural center, and we had an opportunity.
For this particular picture, it's, you got glare there, but in the background, that is a giant pig. And they were celebrating their anniversary, and I'm not exactly sure, it was 230-plus years anniversary, so they had 230 pigs throughout the, throughout this. And this was their local museum, but that was the largest one. And then they had some others that were like waist-high and then smaller ones. But it was quite an awesome display and reminded us of the cows' display that the City of Chicago did several years back.
And the gentleman that you see there wearing the hats, the one on the, on the right and the one next to myself, those are members of the Lions organization in Sinju County. Here's another.
Oh, that glare.
There we go. There was a festival that was going on at the cultural center while we were there, and this group did a really impressive presentation to us, a performing arts presentation, sharing their culture with us. And that was a very dynamic group. After we left the cultural center, we went over to the county building, and we were promptly greeted with a dragon dance and a group of students. Really interesting way to start a meeting. Think we should try that here?
Yes.
And then we met, and they're actually, their chamber councils worked with it. I would kind of, it was kind of reminding me of the Chicago City Council, relatively large room, probably seated about sixty, sixty-some people. And at that, we had a presentation where we showed our video, and then they showed a video about their county. And there were a lot of discussions about Westmont, discussions about their county. Actually ended in a press conference, and it was just very impressive. It was a wonderful experience. After that was completed, their county governor invited us for dinner along with about twenty-five, thirty other people at his home, right around next to the county building. And in this photo here are members of county officials and also members of the local Lions group that was there to join us for dinner. So a very warm and welcoming group and very much interested in doing a sister city program. Again, we would be looking at things like a student exchange program, cultural exchange program. We're talking about business development opportunities with them also, so a whole wide range and scope. And we'll get into more detail as we do the presentation. Other thoughts or?
And then we're hoping to do that presentation at the next administration committee meeting, which we talked with Trustee Little about. And we'll discuss if it's possible to start a little bit earlier that day, because we might need that amount of time. But we took over a thousand photos and dozens of materials, so quite a bit relayed, everybody.
Any questions that anyone might have about?
Did you pick a sister city?
That is still in discussion. When we met with the one county, she says, "Well, this is only the first meeting. We need to talk more." But that is part of the process. Conversations, and we met earlier today, repair correspondence and communications with them to finalize this. But I would think Sinju County is probably the, which is their high-tech area, their country, is probably the candidate in terms of being able to do a full, robust sister city program. But in terms of formally being able to announce that or too early to be able to do that until those communications have been completed and understanding fully established with them.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for this evening, and we'll move on to Manager May.
I had nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Clerk Simmski?
I just wanted to tell everybody it's beautiful out there right now. Shut off those TVs. Get out to that street fair. There's only two more. So tonight and next Wednesday, Thursday night with the fire trucks. So get out there, have fun, enjoy while you can. It'll be over before you know it.
Thank you. Moving on to trustees, since Trustee Addington's not here, we'll go to Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a real quick recap. Fire truck night last week was amazing. We had public works trucks and Mike isn't here anymore. Oh, all right. Well, Public Director Mike Ramsey brought out villages and, from other areas, and their trucks too. So it was amazing. We had the really tall cherry picker, and kids wanted to go up in it, and obviously we couldn't let them, but they were all milling around. They had the two big dump trucks that had the snow shovels right at the street, the snow plows, right at the Burlington and Cass. And everybody really enjoyed that because the snow plows are painted. Little children had doodled all over them, and they're absolutely wonderful. And I didn't realize that that was the case before last week. So that was a lot of fun. Again, fire truck night is next Thursday. It's been rescheduled from a rainout in July, so, and it's our last one, so please come out and enjoy that one. We also have Reclaim 13 5K Run Saturday morning at Ty Warner Park. For more information, go to their website at www.reclaim13.org. And that's the number thirteen dot org. And the next administration meeting, I don't have a date for it. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome back. And thank you, Larry, and everyone for going there and representing us. That's a great adventure you guys were on. Piggybacking on the, on the customer service, I know Attorney Zemanek doesn't like us to point out individuals, but I happened to witness one of our public works gentlemen the other day, was very busy, was stuck in traffic, and he was following a tractor to get across the tracks. And we all know what a headache that can be. And low and behold, here comes this giant sheet of paper blowing down the street. And of course, he gets the opportunity to go next, but, but he doesn't. He, he puts the vehicle in park and picks up the piece of garbage and throws it in his truck. And I thought, boy, oh, boy, this is exactly how a little town like ours needs to work. And I talked to Mike tonight, and that gentleman was Jeff Bonk. So I would really like to thank Jeff for his extra effort. I know that's, could be part of his job, but, but not everyone takes that extra effort. So again, thank you to Jeff and all, everybody in all their departments for their extra they do. Moving on to the Environmental Improvement Commission. The Richmond Garden, there's a couple different posters and a lot of things that are going on with the Richmond Garden. There are several items for, for sale right now through Zazzle, and this is going to help fund the garden. And then they're also talking about possibly a fall fundraiser where we're going to try to get students in the schools more excited about potentially volunteering. So that's ongoing. And then we are also working on a new climate action plan for the village. The EIC will send a notice out to local public agencies over the next few weeks to find out how our public agencies can work with the village to ensure environmentally friendly practices. And this will be ongoing through the year. And again, thank you to the Environmental Improvement Commission.
Thank you. Trustee Nero?
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome back. First, I'd just like to call up Chief Weiss to recap, please, on the burn camp we just
Thank you, trustee. On Saturday, August 6th, we had the burn camp fundraiser. Had a lot of activities, a lot of people volunteering. This year's attendance was a little lower than last year. They raised about $1,200. Last year, they raised $2,000. So I invited them to come to try to raise some, some more money at our fire truck night next Thursday night to try to get that 2,000 mark so we can send two kids to burn camp this next year. So it was very successful. They're gonna, they changed it from September last year to August, and they feel that probably wasn't a good change. So I think they're going to go back to September next year, but as soon as we get that information, we'll share it.
Very good. Thank you, sir. It all adds up, right? So it's more than they had before the event. And then next, I just want to remind everybody that the Citizens Police Academy is still accepting folks that want to register. Please sign up at our website, westmont-il.gov. Please do it as quick as you can. Spots are filling up. And then next, I just want to remind everybody that, again, our September 11th anniversary, fifteenth anniversary memorial ceremony will be, of course, on September 11th at the Police Fire Headquarters facility at 500 North Cass, and that's at 1:30 PM, again, on September 11th. Please try and make it if you can. They always do a great ceremony. And then last, but certainly not least, the next Public Safety Committee meeting will be September 1st at 4:30 PM. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to welcome the kids back. It's another school year, so I just want to remind everybody, please keep your eyes open, watch for the school buses, watch for them on their bikes and walking. Here's to another successful 2016, 2017 school season. And then our next finance committee meeting will be Thursday, September 1st at 4 o'clock here at Village Hall. I'd like to welcome everybody there. Everyone is welcome to attend, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Barker?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things this evening, actually, three things, sorry. The first one is an effort that was put forth by a resident and a member of the Westmont First Committee, and it's blue ribbons and blue bulbs to support, show support for our police officers here in Westmont. And we partnered, Westmont First partnered with the Westmont Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. They have a very long name, but they're great people. And we also had the assistance of some Westmont businesses, and I want to plug those businesses. Bales A Software, Westmont Paint and Decorating, and All American Paper for underwriting this effort for us. Were able to put, make blue ribbons available to residents. They are at the Westmont Park District, Westmont Chamber Office, Westmont Special Events, Westmont Paint and Decorating, did I say Park District? So they're out there, and they're free to the residents that want to, want to put those on their trees or their mailboxes from August 11th to September 11th for the 30-day display. And it's working out well. And we also have the blue light bulbs for your porch if you'd like to put a blue bulb in. And they, you know, the idea is that when the offices are in the neighborhoods, they see that the residents do appreciate the efforts that they make each and every day. So we're happy to do that. Secondly, tomorrow, there is a meeting of a steering committee for the mural project that we're doing for the 100th anniversary. The first panel is going to be started and delivered here, we're hoping, on November 11th for an official unveiling. And that artist is Fanny Moise. She's a Westmont resident, phenomenal painter. But we're going to meet with her tomorrow and go over the details of the history of Westmont in the early years. And that'll be the first panel that you'll see in November. So we're excited about that. And then finally, Chief Mulhern and I had the opportunity to represent Westmont on Saturday evening. We had dates. We brought our wives, but we went to a American Chamber of Commerce from TECO, Taiwanese, had an event in Naperville, and it was a performance of children from ages 18 to down to age 5, singing, dancing, martial arts, and all these wonderful talents that they have that were put on by the Taiwanese organization. And it was children that were in orphanages in Africa that were educated and, you know, they get their food and clothing and everything from the Taiwanese chamber organizations. Phenomenal what they're doing there in Africa to help these orphans. And the most talented and wonderful children, great performances. As I had said earlier at a committee meeting, they sing the dance, they speak their native language, they speak Mandarin, and they speak English. So these kids have a lot of skills, and it was a very nice event, and we're happy to represent the community.
Thank you. Moving on, new business, the consent agenda. Does anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
Thank you. The consent agenda this evening consists of Village Board minutes, board to consider approving the minutes for the Village Board meeting held on August 4, 2016. Next is executive session minutes, board to consider a motion to accept and approve and release the following executive session minutes with the exceptions as noted. There are 24 bullets, should I, they need to be read? They're on the agenda. They're itemized.
On the agenda.
Next is finance ordinance number eight, in the amount of $2,113,874.88. Followed by the July 16, July 2016 financial report, board to consider a motion to accept the financial report submitted for the month of July 2016. Purchase orders, first purchase order is DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau, $30,719. I did want to make a note on this one that it is a budgeted item, but when we do the budget, it's the, the, the membership or the, the fees collected for this are a calculation of the revenues that are collected. So at the time, it was, there's a 1% hotel motel tax, and they, 20% of that, 20% of the 1% goes to DuPage CBD. And based on the activity or the collection we had then, that's what the budgeted amount was. That was in here, it says $21,000. The current rate has also been increased to 25%, but the hotel motel stays are also up. So 25% of the 1% equates to this new calculation, $30,719. So it's, even though it's a higher number, it's good news. It means there's bigger activity. Next purchase order, Thomas Engineering Group, $84,238. This represents the, this is the purchase order encumbering the amount for the contract you already awarded for the CBD alley, sections A and B, the construction engineering. Next purchase order, RW Dunhaman Company, $622,175.25. Also, purchase order for the awarded contract for section A of the same project, the CBD alley. Section B, alley construction, also RW Dunhaman, $487,095.25. The last purchase order is Thomas Engineering Group, but this is for the engineering to do the next phase, which we would call section F, to do the engineering services for that. That would be a construction item for next year. That is in the amount of $58,309.70. I want to point out that this is also an agenda item to award this contract, so we would normally have this on the next meeting. So if approved here, you're just approving and encumbering that purchase order would not be spent unless the contract was awarded and the work done. That brings the total of purchase orders to $1,282,537.20. And therefore, the total of purchase orders and finance ordinance number eight is $33,396,412.8. And that concludes the consent agenda, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve as read?
Motion to approve as presented?
Second. Nero?
Motion made in second. On to question.
Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Pass is moving on, new business A, engineering agreement, CBD alley reconstruction project. Board to consider an ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with Thomas Engineering Group for Phase 1 and 2 design engineering services for the proposed central business district, the CBD alley reconstruction project, which is section F. Manager May?
As I just described with the purchase order, this is to do the engineering for next year's project, section F. If you're interested, the location would be the, in the CBD, the Cass Avenue alleys, this is the alley between Cass Avenue and Linden, and section F is the north block, which would be from, from...
Norfolk?
Norfolk, North Naperville Road. And it had some, it said be carefully coordinated with the school operations, and this year the school is doing the construction out in front and everything. So we will be coordinating this over the winter for a smooth project over the summer next year.
And again, I know Mike has left, but it, I know from what he's said and what Noriel has done, they've really reached out to all the businesses, they've coordinated the garbage, they've coordinated the parking. So none of us should hear we didn't know about it. And, and I've seen copies of the letters and personally talked to Mike about him going door to door, so.
No doubt it's going to be difficult for everyone, but there's, it's, it's well-planned as far as what we can do. Just shows how valuable the alleys are as far as their, you know, their need.
Yeah.
And I think that it's also educating the parents too, because a lot of them use that alley, so. All right, do I have a motion?
they've really reached out to all the businesses. They've coordinated the garbage. They've coordinated the parking. So none of us should hear. We didn't know about it. And I've seen copies of the letters and personally talked to Mike about him going door to door, so.
No doubt, it's going to be difficult for everyone, but it's well planned as far as what we can do. Just shows how valuable the alleys are as far as their, you know, their need.
Yeah.
And I think that it's also educating the parents, too, because a lot of them use that alley. All right, do I have a motion?
Motion approved, Nero. Second, Barry.
On the question. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Moving on, new business, video gaming terminal cap discussion. Board to discuss the potential capping of video gaming terminal license for video gaming establishments or other gaming restrictions. Community Development Director Ziegler and Deputy Chief Gunther.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, thank you, Mayor. We are here tonight to talk about the, just to update you on video gaming and discuss a video gaming license cap. Just to give a little bit of background, currently, staff does a monthly gambling update to the Economic Development Committee to let everybody know, you know, what new businesses are in the queue and how much is currently being gamed in Westmont. And Jim and I keep in touch frequently throughout the month to talk about if we're receiving new requests, who they're coming from, and, you know, how other businesses are working out in the community. And currently, we have multiple requests in the queue.
Right. So right now, just for a quick update, we have several things in the queue, most notably Circle K at Cass and Ogden, Brown's Chicken, and Margie's Beef down at 63rd Cass. All three come with unique circumstances, so we take them on a case-by-case basis. You know, Brown's Chicken is an existing business in Downers Grove. They want to move to Westmont with an adding video gaming. Margie's Beef has been a staple of Westmont for years and years and years, and they would like to add that, get the video gaming, which requires the liquor license, so they have their application in. Circle K, which is the most unique circumstance out of the group, has been trying to modify their business model to meet our requirements. So that's evolved, and that's kind of where the discussion, for this discussion, began. You know, the board capped the, or we put a solution to the last problem or the last situation that was blossoming, which was creating the Class 22 cafe license, and where we addressed that issue, and that's been very successful. Now, we're seeing an evolution into this newest situation where we're getting these requests that are trying to fit a business around video gaming. So that's kind of the update for what we're currently looking at.
So, and just to expand a little bit more on that, with the Circle K, we've had two potential restaurants that have been interested in the space. One was a pizza place that, you know, their appetizers are tortilla chips with nacho cheese. Their menu is real dogs and fresh pizza, and they have, you know, five different kinds of hot dogs. You know, they're just trying to say that they have a real kitchen so that they can get, you know, video gaming. So that person went to Jim, and then I got the cookie store that wanted a beer and wine license and video gaming. So, you know, we have people that are, you know, pretty much trying to fake doing a kitchen build-out so that they can get video gaming, because other towns around us won't allow it. So based on the discussion at EDC, we had a very brief discussion, and it was referred to Community Development Committee so that we could get board input. So we did research and provided that, and then we'll go over that in just a second. We wanted to talk about the monthly amount that's being gambled currently in Westmont. We're just over $6 million, which has gone up, I think, almost a million over the past year. Where is Westmont in relationship to other communities? What's currently in development? We just went through all the ones that we currently could have in the queue. What does the future hold? And then comparables charts. So Jim's going to go over the charts that discuss the number of establishments that we have in town, the number of terminals, the amount gambled, and then our demographics compared to other communities.
Before you move on, can you, I know we capped that class, so we couldn't have many cafes. To get around that, they're basically just building out a kitchen per our requirements for a liquor license for a restaurant.
Pretty much. So based on our current liquor license requirements, they could do a full kitchen build-out, which we thought would be enough. If you're spending $50,000 to $100,000 on a kitchen build-out, we thought that would create the need for a restaurant. But if you're making $50,000 a month off video gaming, it pays for itself in a month or two, so.
Okay, thanks.
So for the charts, if we can get it up on the screen.
It's on her computer. It's not.
We put it on, oh, it's not plugged into the, here comes Glenn.
Where's that IT guy?
Right on cue.
I know what he did. He did that on purpose to make an entrance and solve. Yeah.
One of the cornerstone presentations, making sure the AV works ahead of time. Ah-ha.
Thanks, Glenn.
Okay. So the first chart indicates how much money's being gambled per municipality. We took a cross-section of municipalities in the Chicagoland area. Hopefully, you can read them all. The red line, which puts Westmont third, and this is June of, just two months ago in June, to update it, July, reports are out, and we reached the $6 million mark. I think it was $6,024,000. So we've even creeped up, you know, in that number three spot. Now, when we talk about, for purposes of our discussion, we're talking about the amount of video game terminals that we have in town, which currently is 56. So we have 12 establishments operating 56 video gaming terminals. By way of comparison for this chart, so we have 56. Villa Park, who's in second place, has 77 video gaming terminals, and Algro Village has 72. So obviously, our 56 machines are pretty busy. And talking about sort of a density or saturation comparison, we took the communities, and Westmont's currently number six for the amount of video game terminals by population. Think that number would be 447, which you see, our red line is just below the 500 mark. And as we, you know, we have these other establishments in the queue, so to speak, that are in the pipeline, as they come online, we're going to move to the left, and obviously, our saturation's going to increase along with our density. Same with comparable for, in square miles, we are number five. We're going to move to the left when we put more online. Any questions about any of the charts?
And this chart is showing that we have one video gaming terminal per tenth of a mile, basically. So some of the things that Jim and I talked about is potentially limiting the number of total terminals within Westmont, which would address the issue head-on. You could also limit the number of terminals per restaurant. A lot of them now have five, which is the maximum that you could have. You could limit it to three, which some of our restaurants in town have. Address primary business advertising. One of the issues that we came across is the Anna's Cafe, which came in recently for their signage proposal. If you can see that on the screen, Glenn. They came to the EDC several times, went to the village board, talked about how family-friendly and what a restaurant, you know, the Anna's Cafe was going to be. And this is the sign proposal that we got. You know, it's probably 70%, you know, video gaming. And I called the business owner and said, you know, if I wanted to bring two little kids in here for dinner, you know, this isn't where I would bring them for a family-friendly restaurant. So they've since reduced their signage, but I feel like this is, you know, this is the kind of stuff that Jim and I are getting all the time, and that's why we wanted to bring it to your attention, that people are saying that they're doing restaurants, but then, you know, we're going to get something that's, you know, could end up being much more significant in terms of the percentage of revenue coming from video gaming versus a restaurant. This also goes to the image in the community, and just making sure that the advertising fits into the surroundings, you know, promotes the restaurant identity. We also have issues in town with the video gaming places putting up extra signs on the parkway, which, you know, we've tried to be more vigilant about. We've also talked about establishing a minimum percent of revenue from food and drink sales, which we think might address the issue with just building out a kitchen but not actually selling anything from the kitchen. So we talked about, you know, could you do a 75% or 20, a maximum 75% of your, a minimum 75% of food sales versus having no minimum percentage.
Food sales or food and alcohol sales?
Food and alcohol sales. Right. That would cover it, right, Spencer? And then we also talked about, and so I'm going to flip to the next slide, which shows the average gaming revenue. So from video gaming cafes in town is typically about 98% of the revenue. So 2% is coming from food and drink. 98% is from video gaming. A restaurant, on average, is typically about 10%. And then the bars are slightly higher at 26%. So in a typical standard restaurant, you should be seeing 90% of your revenue is coming from food and drink. So if we had a 75-25 percentage, it would still give some flexibility, but it would, you know, mandate that they actually had food sales.
Wasn't that really initially what we did with those? And, I mean, they were supposed to be 60-40 on their liquor license. But I just don't see how we would ever regulate that. Like, how would we, because that's the problem we had before, right? I mean, they were supposed to be 60-40, correct? I mean, that's originally how that came in.
Well, we found out there is a way to regulate that.
Okay.
And Spencer, you want to?
Sure. So we do get information from all the restaurants and places for eating and drinking in town for our places for eating tax. And so they send us revenue, which they generate based on their sales. They also will send us the information they give to the state about what they pay for sales tax. So we get the sales from their food, and then at the same time, we're able to get gambling information from online, so we can see how much gambling is played in their store. And then we know the formula, which determines how much they get from it. So it's pretty easy to put the two together and, on an ongoing basis, keep track of, here's the percentage they're getting. If they start getting out of line, then we can go audit their books and look at the details, but we can get a pretty good estimate, just initially from the information they already give us.
And that's pretty accurate, because that info from the terminals goes direct to the state, right? They have no control over that. So it's only they could fudge the books to make it work, right?
So I guess, what in a scenario like that, if Steve goes to open a restaurant, and he really wants to have this restaurant go, but the machines outdo the restaurant, and he really does want the restaurant to go, but the machines keep outdoing it, like, would we come in and close him down? Would we come in and take his machines out? Like, I just don't know about that one. That one seems like a really hard way for us, you know, because we've seen restaurants, as I think Larry says, you know, they're so volatile in their first couple of years, that I question how that one would work. I'm all for restricting them. I don't think we should let another one in town, is my stance. But however, we can do that legally. And, but again, I just, I think that that's a tough one to...
I think so. I think so, too. I think it would be hard to say, you know, you're doing too well in one aspect, and you have to shut them down. But it is something that we could do monthly, and then, you know, let them know that their liquor license could be, you know...
You have another option?
We do. We have a bunch of options.
I might answer, Trustee Barry.
And again, I know it's just open discussion. I didn't mean to interrupt, but just as long as we're on it.
It's one of my biggest questions, too. And then one of the other regulation tools that we talked about is updating the liquor license rules as they apply to video gaming.
You know, in a lot of, you know, the things that we're talking about tonight, it's almost an à la carte menu of options, and we're looking for the board's direction on which things to take off the menu to implement in order to get the result that you're looking for. So, and obviously, everything's, you know, subject to legal muster, but, you know, we could limit the number of liquor licenses. We could make any application go through the EDC process to show, you know, to let them jump through the hoops and go through the process, you know. So, and whether they want video gaming or not, we can send every liquor license application through EDC. We could, we can see if we could put a moratorium on the ability to get video gaming terminals subject to being in town for a period of time, a year, two years, you know, something like that. So there are options out there. It's just a matter of what we're comfortable with implementing, you know, at the board level. Oh, there's also one other thing. I'm looking at my notes. We can further restrict the liquor licenses by adding a, you know, liquor license with a letter designation. So we have a Class 1. We can make a Class 1A, and make that A portion address video gaming, you know, to, you know, to further restrict it. So Attorney Zemanek was looking at that, and we will hear from him at some point to see what our options are.
I think there's no doubt we want to eliminate these cafe disguised businesses from coming in.
Especially the gas station.
Well, you know, truck stops are...
DuPage County, right?
Truck stops are one of the, you know, you go to rural Illinois, truck stops are allowed to have.
Right. We're in DuPage County, right. I mean, that's not an image we need, I don't think.
No, that's not a truck stop.
But that's a way to get creative. I mean, you could have a truck stop on Route 34, probably, as far as...
I think Roselle has used that, you have to be in business two years before you can...
I really like that.
I like that.
Yeah, I like that, because...
And it's been successful for them.
I think we're at the point now with our economic development where we don't have to dangle the carrot of, oh, you can get video gaming. I think we can stand on our own merits. We've proved ourselves, and people should be coming in and knocking on our doors because we've got so much to offer the potential businessmen. I like having a business open for a few years, and then we can revisit it. I also kind of like the cap on the terminals. I also don't want to restrict, because you did mention that Margie's is looking into it. They've been here a long time. And I'd hate to have to totally restrict it from them, because they've proven themselves. They've been in Westmont for long enough to say, you know what, we're here. We're here for the duration. And I like going in that direction personally myself, is I want to see somebody here a few years before they even have the option to come up and ask for it.
I think Marie's spot on. We originally did this, was to give the existing businesses a shot in the arm. It did that. It helped them. Now, people are taking advantage of it, right? So if you limit them to that two-year thing, it's going to solve that, because now they have to come in and really set up a restaurant, make it sustainable for two years, and then apply for it. I'm sure it'll help their business, but who's going to do that?
Doing that doesn't eliminate our current businesses that do not have it.
That's right. Yeah. And I don't know, restricting the terminals might be tough, because everybody already has five. How is that fair, right? That might not be too fair for everybody.
Trustee Barker.
Yeah, I'm kind of done with the video gaming thing. And I would say is, I don't want to walk into every place, whether they've been here a long time or a short time, and have video gaming available. So I support, you know, putting a cap on this any way that we legally can. And, you know, I think, I don't have any problem with it going into Margie's. I, you know, we had that conversation about Brown's Chicken and whether it would be good to bring them over and have that. But if there's a way that that's going to turn into a video gaming terminal and not a Brown's Chicken, then I don't want it, you know, because we don't need it anymore.
Well, that's why they're applying for a liquor license.
Right. Well, yeah, they're renting one up, and they're looking to relocate.
And there's Brown's Chickens all over Illinois, and none of them have liquor license, to my knowledge, unless they're getting them specifically.
There's a couple, there's three of them, East Dundee and...
They're applying for four new locations, Melrose Park.
Melrose Park.
Where video gaming's allowed?
Right.
Where they have alcohol.
Yeah, but they're just starting...
Where they have alcohol, but do they also, in those towns, allow video gaming?
Yes.
So that's why they got the alcohol.
Yeah, so they're just in the beginning stages of that. I think the East Dundee store didn't know that they were getting the terminals, based on some information I had. So that was news to them when somebody asked.
If there was any, if there was any way to unravel the ones that are not legitimate businesses, I would kind of think I'm in favor of that, too, because I don't like this deception. Those signs on that particular business, they're atrocious. And I wouldn't want it on Ogden Avenue. I wouldn't want it anywhere in Westmont, you know. And so if they clean up the signs and make it appropriate, and serve some food, and turn it into what it was supposed to be, the intent, otherwise, it's hard to get behind it.
Little?
We're all on the same page. I am so not in favor of this. If we recall back to when it first came up, I had pretty much stood up and said that this is not going to go away. This is here. And I think people didn't take it seriously enough, and now we find ourselves in a bind. I think it's imperative that we restrict the number of terminals in the village. And if we have to raise that on a case-by-case scenario to allow Margie's to have one, or two, or three, then that's the way to go. But I think that if you don't put that restriction out there, you're going to find more people sneaking in the back door. out there, you're going to find more people sneaking in the back door. It's a cash cow. There is no way that you can prevent people from trying whatever they can to get in there and make their money, too. So, liquor licenses or not, they're, they're really pushing the limit on, you know, Anna's was so nice, and they're from Clarendon Hills, and, you know, they just want to do the best hamburgers, and then you look at the windows and you see, you know, you can't even see people in there because of the window advertising. So, I'm, maybe we can put a moratorium on the type of signage? I think that they need to understand that this cannot be allowed. You know, if it's not allowed, then maybe they won't see us as an easy target, try to come in that way.
And I think, and we'll have to ask the attorney if we can put a limit on the terminals with the possibility of addressing each one individually. Is that possible?
And I'll, I, I didn't research all the potential options that, that have been brought up, because I didn't want to go down a rabbit hole and spend a lot of time until there was some direction as to a, a couple of specific options to look at. You know, you look at the, the Video Gaming Act, the state act, and it just says, hey, if you're licensed establishment and qualify, you get a gaming license. And then it says, oh, but municipalities can license the individual terminals. I'm just not sure how far we can go to say, well, we gave you a liquor license, and you got your state license, but now, we're not going to give you, we're not going to license your terminals. So I, I would think if we tied the two together, where someone would have to be upfront, and if they're, that they want not only a liquor license, but a video gaming terminal, and come for approval for each, and then you could deny them for each individually, including denial of the liquor license. And if they come in after the fact, once they've had a, a liquor license, and you're not in favor, at least they've been forewarned, here's our ordinance, and I would think you would need some objective criteria for how you're going to evaluate requests for additional terminal licenses, such as geographic distribution, the type of business, et cetera, et cetera. Presumably, their background would be clean, because they got a liquor license and a state gambling license.
John, do you think the two-year wait is realistic, to make them wait before they can apply for it? Like, they have to have an established business before you?
I think so.
Yeah, good.
And three would be even better.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The idea was to help the business that had been here for fifteen years, right? So, I mean, I'm okay with that, I just don't know if we could do it.
I think the consensus is we've got to do something.
So, so I have a couple of thoughts. I, I question the two-year thing, because I, I could see, again, as Marie and all of us have, you could see that these are, these are great investment, and we will lose businesses for this. I mean, I, I talked to a gentleman today that's interested in Pompey, only if he can get the machines, you know, and, and I think, you know, Margies, all these others are, are going to, to see that. And, and I could see somebody saying, I'm opening a business, I'm going to open this business today, and not doing anything, getting their business license, not operating any type of business, and then coming to us two years later and saying, okay, I'm ready for my machines now.
But we've got to do something, though.
Well, but again, how do we, how do we define open as a business? You know, how many hours, how many, so again, I, I would really want that laid out of what two years means. Furthermore, I, I question whether we shouldn't just rescind the ordinance, and, and not have them anymore, and who's ever grandfathered in is grandfathered in. If those places burn down, they can't get them, and that's the end of it. I, I personally don't like a place like Margies, I, I don't like to go in with my six-year-old and, and see gambling. I, I feel that the parlors, I think we have just enough. I, I don't want any more, but, but those are geared to over twenty-one, just like the taverns, where you can go in there and gamble and drink. I, I question even whether, you know, the Papa Cero's one is off to the, to the side, but, again, as, as we're saying, as a family restaurant, you know, is Margies all of a sudden just going to be a place to, to go sit and, and have people have machines? And, and so, and I guess we shouldn't be calling them out, but let, let's say a hot dog stand, you know, I, I don't feel that those places should have machines. I don't feel like a Brown's Chicken should, should be half gambling parlor. So, I'm, I, I, I like them in the taverns, I like taverns. So, you know, so, so I like them in the taverns, I like the, the amount of cafes we have, we have them spread out, you know, from far end of town to the other far end of town. I don't think we've had any problems there whatsoever, as far as nuisance. So, I know I didn't answer any questions, I guess I brought up more questions, but I would really like to see it where, where we didn't bring any more machines into town. You know, that would really be my thought on it at this point.
That side feels that way, I know.
Well...
She's giving me notes.
No, but...
Well, the other thing that, uh, Trustee Little and I did discuss was, was is there a possibility for a, a, a very expensive license for them?
No.
No, there is not.
The state act limits it to twenty-five dollars per terminal for a non-home rule municipality. If you're home rule, you can charge whatever you want, as long as there's some reasonable relationship to the fees.
Right now, we're not char, there's no license fee for them, right?
There is, twenty-five dollars per terminal, but that's all we can charge, so we...
We can limit sixty...
You can do, you can...
Fifty-six.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I believe you can limit the terminal's number. Deputy Chief Gunther mentioned, you know, maybe a, a second class of liquor license, so if you apply for your Class Four restaurant license, and you want to have video gaming, then you'd apply for a Class Four A video gaming license as part of your liquor license process, and that could have a steep fee associated with it. But again, that, it's more generating revenue. You would need, kind of like limiting the terminal license, some defined criteria as to when you're going to grant it, when you're not. If an old-time favorite comes in, and your friend, you know, they're friends with the chamber, and they're friends with the board members, they're going to get their license. Someone who's new in town, you may not have, maybe. Someone who's new in town may not get the license, and, and then...
Look at you.
Did I look at you?
Truth is, John, we would give anyone the same opportunity that we would give a longstanding.
But that's the concern, is that all of a sudden, now you're facing a lawsuit. Did I look at him?
Yeah.
I'm answering his question.
Usually got the good stand.
But, you know, my, my fear is some sort of discrimination lawsuit, or unreasonable rejection, and all of a sudden now, not only are you fighting this battle, but you're fighting litigation battles.
Mayor, I just want to clarify one thing. I, what I meant earlier by not wanting to restrict the terminals, I meant individually, like, I, I guess I was under the impression that we wanted to take the limit from five to three, and then you would have to take existing ones out of the existing places that they've already paid for, and that's what I didn't like. But the idea of capping them totally, village-wide, I think is good, right? We have a ton of them, we got to stop these kind of places, we're not truck stop, we're Westmont, a nice community, and a great spot of town, the last thing you want to see is triple sevens in windows, right? I mean, you go to Des Plaines for that, that's pretty clear.
And I think that, you know, those couple businesses that only have three, or two, you know, we should figure, whatever that number is, to get those up to five. That should be our number, at this point, you know, because I know a couple of them...
It's fair for them, yeah.
Right, so, so if those wanted to come and get those machines while they were existing right now...
Right.
I think Bishop Chile only has a couple, right? They have two or three.
Right, and I, I think they, they choose to have less based on space available.
I, I think that may, and that may be their thing, where they say they don't want anymore, but, but at least we give them the opportunity to say, hey, now is your time to get three more, or two more, or, or forever hold your peace.
Didn't we do like a survey to all the restaurants and businesses a while back that said, hey, are you interested if you could, because we're thinking about cutting this off?
We did, we sent out individual letters to all of the liquor license holders.
And they all said no, and now a couple are coming back saying we want to do it?
We had a couple, once we started talking about putting a restriction on it, we had a couple of people that came right in and said, I want it, and then they never came back, so, everybody knows.
Let's go back to Harold's idea about rescinding it. You know, if we do, would vote to rescind it, you know, this group right here today would vote to rescind it, and the, the people that have the license would be grandfathered in. And then if that dissipated down, where they, for whatever reason, went out of business or whatever, and the number dropped down to ten, or six, or eight, or whatever, and you wanted to raise that number back up to generate the revenue, because obviously, there's a financial benefit to us, but we have to have a, a level of video gaming that we could all live with, so future boards or whatever could always bring it back around, as long as it's legal in the state, and raise the number up again. So, rescinding it might be the cleanest way, just to say, we're done right here, and let's see what happens, and let other people address it in the future.
Be fine, what do we do with the ones that are, like, in the queue halfway through?
We're right in that gray area right now, this is discussion only, so...
I would point out, sorry.
I'm sorry, but I mean, I think, as Jill pointed out, I mean, you know, greatly there, what we were sold, and, and, and what is pictured there, with, you know, coins and everything, and, in their defense a little bit, it seems very close to what Dave and Buster's advertises also, which is very family-oriented, it is eat, drink, play, except for theirs has gambling chips all over it versus video games. And, so again, I, I was sold on the idea that this was going to be a neat little burger place. To me, it looks like a gaming place, where if you happen to be hungry, you, you can get something.
Yeah, microwave burger, right.
If you rescind it, is there any difficulty in reinstating it?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I'd have to double-check that, but...
Back and forth every month?
Yeah.
I don't know if it'd be every month.
Yeah, right.
Though there is a referendum provision in the state act that would, I think, allow us a citizen-initiated referendum, or a village-initiated referendum. Mayor, I'm not quite sure how easily you can flip back and forth once you rescind it. I know there was talk about restaurants, which are, seem to be the primary applicants here. There are sixteen different classes that allow consumption on the premises that would be eligible for video gaming. That includes four classes that comprise restaurants, there's hotels, golf courses, nursing homes, athletic clubs, meeting halls, bowling alleys, wine stores, groceries, certain grocery stores, performing arts venue, and a brewery. So, when, when looking at, all right, if we restrict food, which I, I think maybe you guys weren't really in favor of, of food sales percentage that would affect the restaurants really, but not all of these other classes that could potentially get liquor licenses, or video gaming licenses.
One of the things that we also talked about at either CDD or EDC was, if the, one of the hotels wanted to come in, like, like the Hilton, we have less concern about that. I mean, I think we could write something in that says, you know, no exterior signage, but if they're, you know, catering to out-of-town guests, and it's, you know, in the basement of, of a hotel, you know...
Depending what John finds, I'm more in favor of limiting the terminal, so there's no new ones. So if somebody wants it that we feel it's important to have, we could approve it.
So, where would that leave, because I, I mean, you would have, as, you know, you have some in the pipe there now, so they very well could be on the outside looking in, too.
Right. Yeah, you can push them off, because the issue's being studied. You also, you know, they've got to come in for a liquor license first and foremost, and if you don't think a Circle K pizza joint needs a liquor license...
Circle K cookie joint.
Cookie joint or pizza.
Yeah, or a cookie joint.
Yeah.
You can just deny...
I actually kind of liked that idea. Out of the ones I heard, I thought that one was...
You know, but whether they request upfront video gaming or not, you know, you can say, you know, you don't need alcohol as a remedy for your little pizza joint or your cookie store to survive.
So currently, there's fifty-six, is that the number?
Right.
So obviously, you know, sixty being that closest number really caps it, or do you look at a number like seventy-five as, as being something where there's some, you know, flexibility to, to give some of these, you know, if there's three in the works that we've already kind of approved through EDC, you know, that could be twelve machines or fifteen machines pretty quick.
EDC's recommending...
Well, I understand that, but we also don't, as, you know, prior experiences where people have been, gone through a long process, then all of a sudden, you know, we, we were okay, okay, and now all of a sudden, we're going to tell them, no, I, I don't know that, that's good business practice for us at the village. I mean, if, but I was really under the illusion that that Anna's was, was dead, because it seemed like it went away for a long time.
Yeah, he's, he's doing his build-out right now. It just, it just took him a while to get his lease signed, so... But we, we were upfront with Brown's, we called them immediately after the EDC meeting, met with them the week after, told them that the board was discussing it, and then we're meeting with them again next Tuesday, so...
So if we pass this in a future meeting, it'd go into effect immediately, or we could put on October first, or, to set, okay?
We should do it on next agenda, I would think.
Well, if we, if they're not done by that date, we pass it.
It's the gas station, it's the Jewel.
That's it.
Yeah.
I think we have to do everything we can not to lead that list, you know, the list that Jay presented, I don't want to be on the top of that list.
Yeah, that's right.
It's happened the most.
And then the other thing is, I know that Larry Forsberg, and even Trustee Barry mentioned it, there's an opportunity for certain established businesses that need to relocate, that a gaming will bring them into town. And Phillies is a good example, which is very successful, but they closed on Willbrook, and they may consider Westmont, so you got to, and again, I want to point out, there has been no issues at all, other than signage, you know, that it's, it makes it look like we're a gaming town, but as far as the police, I don't think you've had one call in two years, or...
None.
None.
Yeah, so...
And there is always that economic impact of people coming to our town and using this stuff, and, and I witnessed it firsthand every morning. You know, Citrus Restaurant, the Stella's girls from all of their other stores meet there every morning. You know, one of them goes to that store, but then they go to their other places, so, you know, there's a good chance they buy gas, there's a good chance that they do other things here in town. So, again, I don't think we want to necessarily, you know, shun away business, but I really think we've, we've maxed out the gaming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, or, or are pretty close to maxing out.
So, is the direction to cap it?
I like that direction, is to cap it.
I know Bruce said rescind it, but I'm, I just want to make sure that we don't create problems if we need to reinstate it.
Yeah, I'm fine with capping it, but I don't know where that is right now.
Okay.
And I also think that's easiest on staff, where they're not having to track down if a restaurant's really performing, and Spencer's going through the numbers, and so...
Yeah, right. It's tough to enforce that, right?
If you have a cap, I, I think Bruce, maybe you alluded to this, you know, you have the flexibility to increase that cap.
If someone were to come in, we'd really like the idea.
Right, and that's where I think we just have to work on developing some objective criteria for, for evaluating this, so you're treating everyone fairly.
Can we decrease it? If we lose a business that has five, can we decrease it?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, good.
So it'd be very similar to a tobacco license, or a massaging license, where if, again, the Hilton comes to us and wants a variance on that, our board or a board could approve that.
Yes, sir.
The hard, the hard part of the whole thing is they come before us, and they, they tell us one thing, and then they go out and do it in something else, and then it becomes a policing thing, that you have to go and find out, are they doing this, are they doing that, and then you're going to have to go back and check, what are they doing a year from now? Is it, you know, there's, they sold all their kitchen equipment, and...
Is it incumbent upon us, then, to make sure that we ask the right questions when people come in front of us?
Yeah, but they can tell us anything.
I felt like the Anna's place, I felt like all the right questions were asked, I mean, I mean, I felt like they sold us on the restaurant concept.
Did we ever ask them, front and center, how many terminals are you planning to bring in, and...
He said five, and then he said how many seats he was going to have, and then he said it would be majority restaurant sales, so...
And staff worked with him to make sure the kitchen build-out was light, so they had to beef up their kitchen, their seating was a little light, make sure the, I think the gaming terminal location was moved to a more out-of-the-way location, so it wasn't centralized in the restaurant.
Visible as soon as you walked in.
Didn't really get into signage too much.
No.
But he, he did bring in his menu, he did tell us that he wanted to sell his burger, that his burger was unique, and that he really was going, I mean, I remember that part of it, that he-
He had existing places, too, right? The one that was in West-
He was in Western Springs.
He still is.
Western Springs.
And he's an Oak Brook trustee, too.
But I guess the key to remember, even if it costs $100,000 just to provide that kitchen, they don't even have to serve a single thing in there, they'll make that money up in, in-
Years.
Three, four months.
Right.
So, and that's not what we want.
No.
I think the signage restrictions, too, we've got to look at, too.
Sign and then cap.
Yeah.
I will say, if someone were to apply for a restaurant license and never open the restaurant, and I say restaurant license, restaurant liquor license, you know, the requirement for that is that the preponderance of their business is service of meals. It doesn't say revenue, but it, it has to be a good part of their business. We found that wasn't the case with the gaming cafes, which is why you created a different license classification for them, but if someone like Anna's just stopped serving food, you'd have the right to pull their liquor license, and then they couldn't video game.
Can they fight that, though?
Sure.
It's tough to prove, isn't it?
Well, if they don't have an operating kitchen, it's pretty easy to prove.
The easiest thing.
Picture it one time and boom.
If we capped it, then we're done.
Yeah, if it's capped, it's capped, and he may get in, he may only be able to get three machines or something, because we're, you know, if all of a sudden our existing want more, but what would we do in the future if, like on a sale, I guess those, the state handles that, or on a sale, they shut down anyways, right?
If, for a sale of a business, you mean? The liquor license and the video gaming license are not transferable, so they'd have to come back to the village and come back to the state for that, and if we've reduced the, the cap because of the sale, you know, they might not get it.
And then, you know, just one more comment on, on the hotels. It may be fine not to ever give the hotels those machines also, because if somebody really wants to gamble, the closest ones are going to be in Westmont. So, you know, if you want to take the shuttle from Oak Brook Hills to Stella's, or to Potbelly, or wherever, they're, they're not going to go farther than that, so it's not like we necessarily would be losing them.
True.
Larry, do you have anything to add, any comments?
I think the only thing what he had is, the queue's probably a little longer than we even talked about, because what's going on in play right now is we have three other restaurants that are on the market or about to change ownership, and which would even further increase the number of requests we would see, so putting a cap on this truly makes sense, so.
I think that would satisfy all our concerns.
Oh, yeah.
And looking into signage, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
September 1st, two weeks, we'll-
Is it sooner to better for the board?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, September 1st.
Yes.
Thank you, very detailed.
Thank you.